Karen, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris?
Here.
JR Huddleston?
Here.
Deborah Johnston?
Here.
Bill Lukens?
Here.
Larry Pratt?
Present.
Craig Romi?
Present.
Caitlin Turner? Linda Varvel?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the folks know before any vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. The item that we need to amend is new business item D. A possible motion discussion to accept the donation of playground equipment valued at approximately $27,000 from Rob Mason. Would like to ask to change that to possible motion discussion to accept the donation of playground equipment not to exceed $30,000 from Rob Mason in memory of Marguerite Mason to be installed at Upper Chautauqua Park. So we'll remove the valued at approximately $27,000 and replace that with not to exceed $30,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute, the agenda with the said changes under new business D, possible motion discussion to accept the donation of playground park equipment valued not to exceed $30,000 from Rob Mason.
Second.
In memory of Marguerite Mason.
Now I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize, Deb.
That's okay.
The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the December 1st meeting.
I make a motion to approve them.
There's a lot of anxiety tonight.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11th council meeting?
No.
November 1st.
November 1st.
Oh, yeah, November 1st.
See how that happens?
I need to make, I need to make a change on that. Do I make it now or is there a discussion?
I did a second on that, but.
She can amend.
What do you need changed, Deborah?
Under the committee reports, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the third line, the second line below that said he directed to work, he was directed to work with Boulder Falls Homeowners Association and request to be annexed. The next part of the line heard a request for a setback variance. That should be scratched and put, he is in country club estates and Boulder Falls Road is next to access his property. So just scratch heard a request for a setback variance because there was no setback variance involved there.
Did you get all that, Karen?
I think so.
All right. Work with Deborah tomorrow to make sure the language is what she needs it to be.
So you said he is in country club estates, that's all you're saying, right?
He is in country club estates and the Boulder Falls Road is next to his property. Otherwise, he's kind of landlocked with no access.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Need a motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $165,438.86.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $51,587.2.
Second to motion.
Discussion?
I have a question. On page two, the holsters, I talked to, I talked to City Hall this morning and they explained why they got them. Are they going to surplus these or what, the old ones, or what are they going to do with those?
I don't know what they're going to do with the old ones. I, I just, I don't, I will try to explain. I don't know what they're going to do with the old ones.
And I believe as far as LES, which is law enforcement surplus, it, if I'm correct, it must be offered to another law enforcement agency if they're going to surplus.
That's fine. I just wonder if they ain't going to work on any of their duty weapons, there ain't no sense in keeping them around. Am I correct?
So we'll get an answer for you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have anyone from the public that wants to address the council? Come on down.
Is there someone coming in?
Hit the microphone, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Mason. I talked to you this afternoon about where this 30,000, whatever. I'm already donating $27,000 to this thing and it's, I said I would talk to you about, you know, if there's further expenses and stuff like this. I never agreed to the 30,000. I'm not very good at this public speaking thing, but I don't even understand why we need to pay the sales tax. I've got a way around that as far as that goes. There's a nonprofit area in here, in town here that can actually buy the equipment. I think I'm, I'm donating enough here. We've got another 3,500 going to the school for a wheelchair swing set. It just seems like you're overstepping here. This has never come into play. I should have been more forthright on the telephone, apparently, but I thought I was. But the 30,000 is just, you know, no. I, I don't see where that's coming from. I mean, even the, even the what, 27,156.44 for the width tax for this, I think I'm giving enough right there. We're, we're all over this, but I just, I think you're overstepping here. I'm not going to pay labor, the cement and stuff like that. I think you guys should bore the holes down and get the site ready. You got to tear out the equipment, the old equipment out there already that's so dilapidated it just needs gone anyway. But I just, this threw me for a slight when you said that, but I kind of had a feeling that's what was coming. But I don't know. What do you, what do you say? You're the one I talked to. This is the first time this 30,000 has come into play.
Yes. And as you mentioned, I called you this afternoon. The conversation was around the 27,000. When we had talked about it at Public Works, there was a question about how much it was actually going to cost. Did that include insurance taxes or not? So my conversation with you today, as I understood it, was that we wanted to make sure that there would be enough to honor your wife with the playground equipment, enough in the donation. Not knowing for sure what that amount was going to be, would it be okay to do a maximum of, not a guarantee of, but to have enough approved by the council that if it exceeded the $27,000, we wouldn't have to come back and have another conversation about accepting another amount for the donation? And I understood that you were okay with that, knowing that it would be a maximum of, not a guarantee of. So if there's misunderstanding, I'll put that on me, but that's why I put that, asked the council to accept that amount.
I'm giving you $27,000 worth of equipment here. I mean, why should I be on the line for more of it? Like I say, I've got that deal up at the school. They're going to put it in by themselves.
Yeah, can I? So are you purchasing the equipment or will you give the donation to the city and then the city purchases the equipment?
There would be no taxes.
That's what I would prefer to do and then you guys could do it non-tax and then you can use that extra $1,600. I'm okay with that, but I'm just not okay with you keep adding on costs.
Well, I, I hope you understood why I asked the council to approve the 30 because there was, we weren't sure when I talked with Lori what the exact cost was going to be. So figured to approve enough to make sure that if the city's going to purchase the equipment, that the money was there to do it, not that we would approve $27,000 and then find out the equipment cost $28,000. Then we would be a thousand short. You'd also mentioned that you thought the city, am I correct that you, you feel the city should donate the labor for the installation of it?
I, sure, well, other than the fact that, you know, we're going to have to have tech people in there, I guess is what I'm saying. That'll be an issue whether I can get enough volunteers, you know, it'd be me, my son, and I know one other person that would be there, no problem. But it's, I just don't want to see stuff keep getting added on here. I think I'm going above and beyond here for a project that you already need. You can't tell me that's not a huge liability out there. I mean, it's a nasty looking swing set and that huge slide. Just by today's standards, that's just got to be a crazy liability. I can't imagine they're not looking at it already. I just, I know how insurance companies work and.
And I hope that you don't feel like the city is pushing back and doesn't appreciate the donation, but there are things that were in our city policy, in our donation policy. If city employees spend any time on city time, then those hours need to be charged to the donation unless council waives those fees. And we've had two situations recently where other donations were made to the city and the city labor hours were included in the fee, in the money necessary for that particular donation. So that's in city policy that if city employees, you know, incur any time, then their hours need to be added to the donation unless council waives those fees. So that's the reason I had said to you today that per policy, those hours would be included.
Yeah.
Before I enter, I have a few questions.
What's that?
So before you answer, so please respond to that. My name is Valerie Henry. You're saying that you will charge the donation people the cost for this. I take offense to that. We paid 15 some thousand or more for this park plan five, six years ago that nothing's been done on. Okay, we did, well, we did Brookside, but I mean, a lot of stuff is set. We keep adding more things, building more things in Centennial, everything else that wasn't on our park plan, but the city has decided to take it upon themselves to put those things in. When our tax dollars paid for that park plan that's been ignored, then you're going to have somebody make a $27,000 donation towards improving these parks for that park plan that sits and will sit till it's void because we're not putting money in. And then we're going to take a $27,000 donation and basically scoff at it and say that our city employees can't pay for it when our city employees would have been having to pay, the city itself would have had to pay for this new playground equipment, everything else, and have city employees put it in when it was on the park plan. So now we have somebody willing to pay for that, or at least 27,000 of it, and then we're going to bill them as well for city employees to put it in? I just, that bothers me. I mean, does anybody have any?
I agree with that. How do I, can we or I make a motion at some point where it's appropriate that we?
It's not on the agenda to make a motion, do that.
Well, when we're talking about the donation and how it's going to be built, I would think that our city employees could put it up so that it's done correctly as well. It's kind of a liability to us that we make sure it's put up correctly.
Robbie, when the playground equipment was put in at Brookside, they sent a tech to set it up and Wes and I went and helped them set that playground equipment up. And I'm sure with the city orders and other playground equipment, they'll send a tech out to do it and I'll volunteer to go out and help set it up. And Deb Johnston already said she would. Larry, I'm sure you'll get more than enough people to set it up. So it don't cost you nothing.
Oh, we need to, you know, someone's going to have to bore the holes and pave the cement and stuff like that.
It's just making it sound like it's open-ended.
Yeah, well, it won't be.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we got the school up there, they're, they're just taking this thing, I'm not paying taxes on it, nothing. And I just don't understand why I'm having to pay sales tax plus this.
If you donate the money, there won't be any sales tax because the city will buy the playground equipment.
Well, that's not what it sounds like to me.
That's what I thought it was.
They told me that, no, you've got to pay the sales tax and.
If you bought the playground equipment, you would have to pay sales tax, but you're not donating the money to the city for us to buy the playground equipment for the park.
Well, I was told Misty said that's illegal and, or Missy or Misty?
Misty.
Your finance officer?
Misty. This is Karen, but Misty is who, Misty is who you talked to, but.
They were telling me that we can't do that, that's illegal.
Well, it would be illegal if, if you bought it wanting us to, if you bought it, you would have to pay sales tax.
Yeah.
But with you donating the money to the city, the city can buy it and.
And that's what I, that's what I always wanted to do.
Yeah.
And I would, I'd do the 27 and then, then you guys would have money to do the extras and stuff. And I think $1,600 would be, well, I don't know, it'd be a little less than that, but.
It'd certainly pay for cement.
Yeah, the equipment itself is 25,499, so 20, 26,000. And then you'd have another thousand easy and as things come up, I'd be more than willing to work with you. I just want to see this thing happen.
Well, Bob was right. It is saying the city policy, if the, if the city crew works on it, that we have to charge. That's if, you know, anybody in town, if, if they need to, you know, something done, the city has to charge them, you know, for the equipment or man hours.
Yeah.
But that's why I said that you'd have enough volunteers to help put this up.
Yeah, it just.
And I think in reference to what you're probably saying, Deb, is, I'm just, I'm not speaking for anybody else on the council, but I, I would personally vote to waive the cost for the city workers to do it. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I was trying to find that word, waive. Thank you.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, I would be on line to do that.
I concur. I feel that that's a very generous donation towards the city on behalf of your family. And I would also waive any costs, additional costs to put it, assemble it and put it in place. I think that's a very generous offer and I, I thank you for that.
Well, yeah, I just.
And I'm so sorry for your loss.
It just seems like it's getting twisted, I'm sorry.
Right.
I, I don't know.
Rob?
I just wanted to, I'm not very good at this.
You're doing fine.
Rob, over here. You have my deepest empathy. I lost my wife six years ago to breast cancer, so thank you for what you're doing, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I.
I don't.
Do this anytime you get to.
Personally, I don't believe that there was any intent to make you have to keep coming more money out of your pocket. I don't believe that's, that's the intent whatsoever, but I think the $27,000 that you're putting forward is, is more than generous and, and I would ask my fellow council members to waive any, any additional costs the city would incur to install it.
I mean, after, if you pass, my kids and, and we were all talking, trying to figure out what to do with the memorial and I went to bed and my kids and Nina Rynsmeier came up with this idea and I'm the one running with it. I just, we just think it'd be awesome.
I concur.
I agree.
I constantly drive by that, by that place. I just picture it there and I just can't wait, so.
Thank you for your donation, Rob.
Good on you, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, I do want to mention again, because I think it's important that, again, as you and I talked today, the intent of the motion that I asked, or the amended agenda item I asked the council to make was in no way intended to say, we want $30,000 from you. It was simply to make sure that whatever the playground equipment cost came in at, that we wouldn't be back here asking the council to approve additional money or asking you for additional money. It was to set a maximum amount that we would not exceed, not that if it comes in at 25, we still expect to keep 20 or five of that. In no way was that intended in the conversation. And if in hearing the motion, you know, that's what you were concerned with, I apologize for that, that was never the intent for it. And then Lori, to your point, what we've been talking about as far as the city needing to charge, that's in the City of Hot Springs donation and acceptance, donation and gift acceptance policy. It was adopted on February 20, 2018. It's on the city website and council is already kicking around what they want to do with that. But it's under section five, acceptance of designated donations of cash or tangible items. There's a number of requirements under there. Number seven, if the donation or gift requires additional purchases or labor to be provided by the city, the dollar value of those additional items shall be included in total donation and collected from the donor prior to any work being done or purchases made. And this donation policy, anytime a donation is being considered, that policy is supposed to be given to the individuals that are seeking to make that donation. And as I said, I know in a very previous donation, the family was billed for the cost of installation of the item that they wanted to donate. So again, being consistent, that's the reason that I pointed out that that's in there. And when I was talking with Rob to say whatever costs are incurred by city employees would need to be covered, council has obviously addressed how they want to handle that. But that has to be talked about in public so that everybody knows why whatever's being done is being done. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Any other communications from the public? That takes us to Personnel. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through E?
Make a motion for Personnel from A to E.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Counsel, thank you very much. Personnel Action A is the city now has a city administrator that will start no later than December 15th. Individuals' hope is to be here sooner than that, but it allows them time to do what they need to, to show up in Hot Springs. Thank you very much for that. There's a lot of folks who will appreciate having a city administrator onboard. Our one and only ordinance, ordinance A, a first reading of ordinance 1238. Can I get a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1238 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Discussion? Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
The motion passes. Onto resolutions. Resolution A, Resolution 2021-23, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-23, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution to adjust the per gallon price for aviation fuel at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport from $5.21 to $5.35 a gallon effective November 16, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? Bill, this was kicked around at Airport Advisory?
Yes, this was discussed on the 4th of November at the Airport Advisory Committee meeting.
This will keep us up with everybody else right in mind, right?
This puts us just about in the middle of the pack. Almost all the regional airports have raised since our last price increase and wholesale fuel prices continue to rise and probably before the end of the year, we'll have to purchase our next 8,000 gallon load. So we're trying to be prepared for that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution, Item B, Resolution 2020, 21-24, a resolution to surplus city property.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-24, resolution to surplus city property.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-24, resolution to surplus city property, Southern Hills Golf Course log pile.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have one question. How, how's that, how's that process? Do we get an open auction with other stuff? Are there surplus to seal bid?
So are you talking about including other surplus items from the city?
Other items at that time, or is that just going to be an independent, just?
It's just going to be the log pile. But to your larger question, yes, there are other city items that we need to figure out how we're going to, you know, manage those. Certainly need to surplus them first. I'd like that to be something that we have our city administrator pick up and take a look at and see where we're going to go with that. All right. So the motion passed?
Yes.
All right, so on to new business. The first two new business items I want to talk a little bit about before we actually get into the motions. There's two agenda items here that address the Highway 385 reconstruction through Hot Springs. In your packet, in your info side, I included the, the bid notices from the state so that you can see what the cost came in at. And I separate, as far as the City of Hot Springs is concerned, there's two portions of that project that affects us, and that's the sewer and water, mostly along North River Street. And then, of course, there's the suspended sidewalk. I didn't think that it was fair to lump those two into a single item if for some reason an individual didn't want to vote for both of them. I didn't want to force you into a situation where, well, I'll have to vote for this because I want the other one. So the first one, the sewer and water project, that's directly related to the highway reconstruction. That will happen when the road is being torn up and rebuilt, so that has to happen. And that can happen independently of the sidewalk itself. So the other part of your packet, I tried to break down the, the water and sewer costs. The project cost itself is $1,725,000, 300, $1,725,312.76. The city is getting a community block development grant for that, which leaves the balance of $1,145,312.76. So again, keeping in mind, these are water and sewer projects. They come out of the enterprises, enterprise funds for either the water or the sewer. And when I talked with Tracy, he believes that of that $1,145,000, the cost will be split about 50/50. So that's how I broke down the cost, coming out of the water fund and the wastewater fund, two cash reserve funds to, to fund those, the Bank of the West and the Wells Fargo. So totaling those and then taking out half of the project cost, that leaves the total remaining in each of those funds. So it helps you understand where, where the city is financially, funding that, the water and sewer project. So we're, we're doing fine there. And then the, we'll talk about the suspended sidewalk when we get to there. But again, the reason that I broke out the, broke them up into two separate agenda items is so that you can vote for one, vote for both of them if you want to, vote for one or not vote for the other one. All right. If I could get a motion on new business item A, possible motion discussion to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation Award of Bids.
I make a motion to, to approve or to concur with the South Dakota DOT Award of Bids, Contract Four, Sewer and Water Replacing at a Cost of $1,727,507.65.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to say I appreciate the information we've had to look at. It's, it's, it's good to have a clear view of what we're voting on here. Appreciate all the work that's gone into the, to the engineering and that we do have a good solid cost estimate. I know nobody's thrilled with the increased estimate, but that is a worldwide issue with increased material cost. And also want to appreciate what, what the city, not only this council, but previous councils have done to put us in the financial position that where I personally believe that we can do some positive things for the city.
Amen.
Any other questions, comments?
It's finally going to get done. The road projects here.
Depending on how you vote tonight, yes, there'll be a combination of, it finally is going to get done. Okay, any other questions on new business item A? Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Linda Varell?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, council. Onto the next new business, Item B, a possible motion discussion to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation Award of Bids.
Make a motion to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation Award of Bids, Contract Three, for construction of a suspended sidewalk at a Cost of $3,904,538.
Second.
Discussion. So on this one, again, I put together some figures for you for the suspended sidewalk. Before I actually get into the figures, we need to vote tonight, whether we're going to approve the suspended sidewalk tonight or not. The State Transportation Board will meet on November 23rd. That's when they will decide whether to accept these bids for the Highway 385 reconstruction project. Bill had talked a little bit about it as far as the costs. The suspended sidewalk came in significantly over the original engineer's estimates, to the point that it brought beads of sweat out for me. It's significant. The state, their portion of the contracts, the bids exceeded the engineer's estimates by $8 million. And the, the feeling is, is that this crazy world we're in right now, these unsure markets that we're in, contributed to these bids coming in significantly over what was thought when the numbers were originally put together. So the state needs to know from the City of Hot Springs whether we are going to approve both of these projects. You've approved the water sewer, now it's up to the sidewalk. If the council decides that the sidewalk is not something that you're comfortable with and you don't concur with that, and talking with Rich Socker out of the Custer Department of Transportation, the state would need to go back and rebid the project. So construction would not begin in the spring. It typically, the, it looks like it would actually begin in, it wouldn't begin in the spring of 2022. The soonest it would happen would be the spring of 2023. And there's no guarantee that the costs would come in any less than what they are now. The state has been working on the reconstruction project for around 10 years. So this, this isn't something that they, you know, we've just jumped into. So the significant impact of this, if council does not prove it, is the road reconstruction project itself will not begin this year. So that's, that's huge. So break down the cost a little bit. What I tried to give you a picture of here is the actual expenses that will be incurred, construction of the, of the sidewalk. Again, it came in at $3,904,535. The estimate, let me go back and take a look at that one. The engineer's original estimate was $2,949,381. So it came over, it came in over, it came in $955,157,000 over the engineer's estimate. The ISG agreement that's on your list, ISG is the design architect that we've been working with. Their fee for the suspended sidewalk, design and engineering management is $408,000. The decorative lights, previous councils approved a cost for the decorative lights, set aside around $420,000. Again, because of the crazy market that we're in, the state let us know six months ago maybe, that the cost of the decorative lights are going to go up from the 420 to the $629,200. So adding those two, those three expenses up gives us a total of $4,941,735. The revenue that is available for the construction of the suspended sidewalk, a previous council approved an agreement with the state of South Dakota in exchange for us taking over university, the maintenance of University Avenue, minus the two bridges, the state would give us $2.8 million. In the, our agreement with the, with the state as far as these, the road reconstruction project, next item that I have listed for you is mobilization reimbursement. The mobilization is anything that's necessary to prepare for the project, to bring equipment in, to stage equipment, those kinds of things. The, the maximum the city needs to, needs to pay for mobilization is $384,000. That's not listed on your, on your sheet. The actual mobilization cost came in at $666,600. So because our maximum obligation is $384,000, the state will reimburse us $272,850,000 towards mobilization. The next item that's listed is pedestrian railing savings. When there was not going to be a pedestrian, a suspended sidewalk, because the federal folks require that there's parking on each side of a highway, there needs to be a sidewalk for everyone to exit onto, along River Street. And the current wall does not meet the height requirements of the federal government to protect someone on a sidewalk from falling over the flood wall. So they were going to put up a, a new railing that we referred to as a trash fence, because it's going to be a fence, it would be a fence right in front of our existing flood wall that would collect dust and trash and everything else. Because the suspended sidewalk will be there, would be there if approved, then that pedestrian railing is no longer required. So there's a savings to the state for not having to put that in of $216,000. So that's revenue that we get back. The bump outs, or what's also known as the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful planting areas, but they're officially known as bump outs, they don't belong to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. They belong to the City of Hot Springs. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful is good enough to take care of them for us. Again, previous council decided that it was okay to put topsoil in there rather than concrete so that we can have nice, pretty bump outs. So there's a savings to the city of $65,100 for us doing that. And then the final number that's in front of you, the $517,000, is money that the city has already set aside for the highway reconstruction, the lights, plus a number of other things. So adding all of the revenue, we have $300, or $3,871,370 available to us. That leaves a shortfall of $1,070,365 to construct the, the sidewalk. So the funding sources for that are, is the, the general fund and additional sales tax fund. So what we're proposing of the cash balance available from the general fund, to take $800,000 and apply that towards the sidewalk, and then from the additional sales tax fund, to take $270,365 to make up the remaining balance for the $1,070,365. So that's the reason that those two numbers are highlighted, is the shortfall is the $1,070,365. And in the funding sources, you see how we make that money up. And then the remaining figures there are to show you the cash balances that would be in place at different times. And Bill, I believe you had some thoughts on those that you wanted to share?
Yeah, it's, you know, we, we talked a lot in the budget hearings about what do we have left, what can we afford? And so after we pulled the money out for the sidewalk and we said, okay, here's what's left in cash balance, but that's kind of part of the story. So then we wanted to figure, okay, we've still got some expenses left in 2021. And so using the finance officer report from October, we said, okay, if we've got whatever percent of expenses that we've used in, in 2021, what does that leave us to spend this year? So based on that percentage, we calculated what you see here, that we're going to spend this much out of these two funds, which, and then using the same thing, how much more revenue do we expect to come in on general fund? And how much do we expect to come in on, on the 212 fund? And then how much do we, did we budget from each of those funds for cash applied? Because remember, we did not have a structurally balanced budget for 2022. We were pulling from both the general fund and the 212. So pulling that money out, then what is our starting point in 2022 after we pay for the sidewalk, pay for the rest of 2021, and budget, apply cash for 2022? So what you see in that far right column, the estimated 2022 starting balance in those two funds, which is, we're still very solvent.
And Bill had mentioned that looking at the, the finance figures that you all have access to, you can take a look at at City Hall, those numbers are based on October of 2021. Our finance officer isn't able to be with us here tonight. She's, she's not feeling well. But in talking with her, again, because it's October, we still have revenue sources coming in the remainder of the year. We still have our second half tax dollar, or property tax money coming in, and we have additional funding coming in. So it only enhances the numbers that you see in front of you. It doesn't take away from those figures. Is there any questions on the numbers that I put together for you?
Actually, I thought it was very well put together. It was, gave us something to really take a hard look at. Good information.
Any questions from the public? This is your money that we're asking them to.
Who's talking to us out there?
Lori, come on down. Or Val, I'm sorry.
A mil, a million.
For the side, for the sidewalk?
A million.
Well, a million, but then you were saying there was savings, right? That we're making by eliminating some stuff, so I'm just trying to make sure you understood.
Sure.
So then it would just be like a hundred thousand?
Oh, no, it's a million.
It's, so it isn't?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't understanding.
Yep. Um, we get, the, the state paid us two point eight million.
Right, I, I got all that, I just, I have some point.
No. And then there's the, uh, reimbursement for mobilization of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Pedestrian railing, uh, they give us the two hundred and sixteen.
So if we don't, if the city didn't want it, does that mean that you might consider not having the bridge now because it's exceeded what we?
The bridge or the sidewalk?
The suspended.
Yeah. That's what the council is voting on now, is do they want to spend an additional one million, seven hundred thousand dollars for a suspended sidewalk, or forego the suspended sidewalk? So the, the two significant things that happened with foregoing the suspended sidewalk is the road reconstruction project will be put off another year, and not only does the project get pushed, uh, back, then we're back into the, the same safety issues, uh, that we pushed very hard for, that the suspended sidewalk would save us. Uh, without the suspended sidewalk, there needs to be a six-foot sidewalk, uh, along the flood wall. Uh, the driving lanes are reduced by a foot apiece, they go down, uh, and then the, um, the sidewalk along the business side of North River Street shrinks significantly. And because the, the actual parking flip-flops, the diagonal parking, parking goes to the riverside and parallel parking, no, diagonal parking comes to the business side, parallel parking goes to the, to the riverside. So now because your diagonal parking, parking, uh, on a, a much more narrower sidewalk, now you, uh, you have bumpers and everything else that are protruding on that even narrower sidewalk. So we get back to the original problem that, uh, the suspended sidewalk keeps for us, solves for us.
Not to mention the fact that the engineering costs that we paid for already would be lost.
Of the four hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, the, the, um, engineering costs, we've already paid two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of that.
I only think for a million dollars, doesn't mean anybody would show up. I think, maybe people should have a right to come in and voice that, give them a number of units or something, maybe.
Well, again, the state of South Dakota is having their state transportation meeting on Sep, on November 23rd to decide whether to accept these bids or not. So they need to know from the city of, uh, city of Hot Springs, uh, whether we agree to accept the bids, and that's, um, we, we don't have another council meeting before that.
If, if, if we had to borrow money to pursue this project, I, I definitely agree with you that that, you know, that would probably warrant a special public hearing. Um, as I kind of alluded to before, this, this council and previous councils have been working very hard, I'm aware of, for at least three years that I've been on the council, to get us into a position where we could act positively on this, even if the answer was worse than we wanted it to be. And we can do this without borrowing money, without putting the, the city in, in a dire financial position. And so I, I understand what you're saying, that, um, we're, we're in a pretty good spot, uh, financially to be able to, to do this. And if I may, Mayor, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the safety issue, uh, is that all right?
Yes.
The, the previous mayor asked me to, to do a safety study when we were trying to convince the state that they ought to be the ones designing and building this for us, because we are, in the summer especially, we're a tourist town, and when you watch the tourists get out of their cars and without even looking, start walking out into traffic lanes and taking pictures of our beautiful sandstones, it becomes a real safety issue. And to take even 12 inches off the travel lanes, you're putting, people that ought to be paying attention to what they're doing, you're putting them that much closer into car, in front of cars, RVs, trucks. There's kids that will jump out, I've watched, I, I've purposely gone down there to observe, and you got little kids that are a lot more excited about heading for the ice cream parlor than they are paying attention to what mom and dad would like them to do. And there's a, uh, a safety process out there that I used to use. It says about ninety-eight percent of the time that we hurt ourselves or almost hurt ourselves, it's because we did it to ourselves. And it's because we either aren't paying attention to our job, we don't have our eyes on our path, we don't have our mind on our work, we lose our balance, traction or grip, or we walk into the line, line of fire. And we do this because we're operating in a state of mind that we're either frustrated, fatigued, um, complacent, or, there's one more, and I apologize for forgetting it, but it almost in some respects, it defines a, a tired tourist. And so, yeah, the, the suspended sidewalk, I think it's going to have a lot of absolute benefits to the city. But even if it had no other benefits to the city, the safety improvement or the safety aspect is going to be significant, um, that, that I don't, I personally don't think we can afford to give up on. Uh, I, I, I still think the state should be paying for it, but I lost that battle. I testified before the, uh, the DOT up in Rapid, Hot Springs sent a huge contingent up there, and we talked to them and we pled our case, but you see the numbers before you, that didn't work either. And the other thing is, I attempt occasionally to glean the message, what's the community saying about faith, about us on Facebook? And the council has been accused of not being business friendly. And I, I take issue with that. I think this council has been business friendly. I've actually compiled a spreadsheet of the pro-business activities we've done. And I would contend that if we don't approve this suspended sidewalk, it will be one of the most business unfriendly things we could do, because by narrowing the sidewalk on the business side of River Street, places like Morning Sunshine, Two Cows Creamery, you can pretty much kiss those tables and chairs goodbye, because by the time you set that table and chairs up, you're not going to be able to get more than one or two people walking by. And that does not bid well for a tourist-heavy downtown. And so if we can get this thing built, I believe it will be very business friendly. It will be a nice place for people to come and not just take pictures of our sandstones, but come and spend some money. So I think it's critical for the business success of our community. And now get off my soapbox, because I'm not sure there's fall protection on it.
Bob, did you have something you want to share?
Karen, it's Bob Paul, 1327 Schofield Street.
Bob Paul.
I'm in the same position all the rest of you are. I am definitely not happy with the increased prices on it. There's not a thing we can do about it, it is what it is. Uh, a lot of the increases are self-inflicted wounds. The suspended sidewalk, I've not been terribly excited about until you, Mr. Mayor, sat down with myself and my wife and explained what it was and what it was coming about. I can agree with that now. The one question I have got is, this is a preliminary vote to approve these things so that the state knows where the city is sitting, correct? Is that what I'm picking up on?
When you say preliminary vote, there won't?
This is, this is the city's final vote before the things, but, but you have to take the vote tonight because the, the state is, is meeting to, to settle up on the, on the bid?
Yes.
Okay. My question becomes, if the state rejects the bids and returns it for a rebid, what is this going to do to what the city is doing tonight? Is, did I make myself understood on that?
Yeah, it, it, it will be void. If the state, um, transportation board does not accept, uh, the four projects that are part of this bid, um, then they will have to go back out for rebids. So the state may say, uh, this is an eight million dollar increase to us, which we didn't expect, so no, we're not approving it.
Which, which by and large, you know, none of us really know for sure, but the guesstimate is, is when they go to rebid, rather than having the eight million dollars over, it could be 12 million over.
Yes, and the state, uh, has done their due diligence. Uh, when it comes in that much over, they begin asking themselves, they take a look at all the bids and, and say, you know, ask, is there anything about these, uh, that's odd? Did we miss something? But all of the bids came in, um, consistent, some were higher than others, obviously, uh, but there wasn't anything that raised a flag, we're being told, at the state level, that , uh, the bids are out of line with, again, this crazy world that we're living in right now, the, the difficulty for, uh, labor, supplies, all of those kinds of things. They're disappointed by it, uh, but they're not, um, it, it's not unexpected.
Well, the only other comment that I would have is that I, for the amount of money that we're looking at a shortfall, I can certainly sympathize with the point that Val is making about having more people involved in this, so that, you know, even possibly, you know, having the citizens decide if they want to vote. On the other hand, I think this meeting was well enough publicized that this was going to be on the agenda, that those people at home, watching on YouTube or whatever, had every ample opportunity to come down and voice their opinion now on what they wanted to have done. The position I'm in, I don't like the increased costs, I don't like the increased taxes that are going to incur on it, I don't see any other choice for the project that has been under discussion for the last several years, for this suspended sidewalk. You're at the point now to where I think there has been so much invested, it's money in our pocket to go ahead and vote for it, hope the state takes the, takes the bid that it is, we're going to have to shell out the extra money and get on with life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Bob. Karen, would you call the rule?
Dave Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
You know, I voted no on this, first time, but I agree with Bill about being friendly towards the business owners, and as much money the city spent and put into this and thinking it'd help them, I'm going to vote yes this time.
Linda Barvell?
Yes.
The motion passes. Um, counsel, thank you very much. This has been, uh, a topic of discussion for a long time. I recognize, um, the impact of this vote, um, and I, I want to say thank you, it's, it's huge. So I'll pass the word on to the state tomorrow that, uh, council approved both of the, the projects, and we'll, uh, wait to see what happens next, I think it's Wednesday, on the 23rd, uh, what the state says, and hopefully we'll have a road, uh, reconstruction project beginning in the spring. So it's exciting times ahead of us. Again, thank you very much. So that takes us to new business item C, uh, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize a public works engineer to sign the agreement.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the public works engineer to sign the agreement with AE2S to update the water master plan at a cost of fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second motion.
So what we're doing here is the, um, water plan that, uh, we have with the, uh, South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. The last plan was updated, uh, in July 1st of 2010. With the, um, American Rescue Plan Act, there is monies that are becoming available, uh, for different infrastructure projects, and what the city is looking at is, uh, to get on the, the state water plan, um, to add a, a new water storage tank and a new well, um, to our, our water system. Uh, and, um, because the plan, uh, is 10 years old, it needs to be updated, uh, so that we stand our best chance of, of getting some money from the, um, American Rescue Plan Act, uh, through the state to increase our, our water capacity. Talking with the, the city engineer, uh, he said it's been a while, we haven't been in a drought, uh, for a number of years, but it wasn't that long ago, people can remember when we were in a drought, and we were at a point that we were pumping almost 24 hours a day, uh, just to keep our capacity up. Uh, we're growing, uh, talking with the, uh, with, uh, Barb, uh, in our water, uh, department, we have a hundred new users, uh, that have been added to the city, and we all see that there is growing activity around Hot Springs, uh, we need that activity, uh, and we need to be able to, to supply water, uh, to those folks as they move into our community. So that's, uh, what's behind, uh, this particular, uh, cost is to update our water plan, so it puts us in the best position to compete for the money that will be coming from the federal government through the state, uh, to improve our, our water system. Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
The motion passes. Okay, so now we're down to, um, new business item D, uh, possible motion as it was amended, uh, to accept the donation of, uh, playground equipment not to exceed 30,000 from Rob Mason in memory of Marguerite Mason to be installed at Upper, Upper Chautauqua Park. So however you want to word that motion, that's the one in front of you.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of playground park equipment, uh, with a value not to exceed 30,000 dollars from Rob Mason in memory of Marguerite Mason to be installed at Upper Chautauqua Park.
Second.
Um, do you want to add anything to that motion to not charge for, uh, city staff to assist with the installation? I believe that was part of the discussion. Can we do that now?
Now's the time to do it.
I just don't know if we, with it, how that part being on the agenda, can we do that?
You can amend the motion, yes.
No, I mean, to vote for the employees to work on it. I'm in favor of it, but I'm just asking if it's, can we do that now?
Yeah.
Technically not, I'm not working.
Okay. And I believe he was also concerned about the not to exceed a maximum of?
Point seven.
Yeah, the 27,000, whatever.
So if you would like to amend your motion?
I will amend, uh, the motion to accept the donation of playground I will amend, uh, the motion to accept the donation of playground park equipment, uh, valued to not exceed $27,000 in material only, labor to be, any labor covered by the city, to be paid by the city at, from, and the donation will be from Rob Mason in memory of Marguerite Mason to be installed at Upper Chautauqua Park.
I'll second that amendment.
Do we need to put in the exact amount that we have on our paperwork?
So, um, I believe, Deborah, you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Do you accept the amended motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, uh, Dave, what was your question again?
My question is, in the motion, the amended motion, we said 27,000. The actual numbers that we have here is 27,156.44. Do we want to go by that actual number?
Hence my not to exceed the $30,000.
I kind of figured 30,000. I'm just trying to get it right, so there's no questions later on.
Additionally, another possibility is, um, to accept the donation of the money for the playground equipment so that we can buy the equipment and not have to pay taxes, or he wouldn't have to pay taxes. So we'd get that additional money that could go towards paying for the installation. So if we worded it to accept the donation of one, of 27,143 dollars, or 156 dollars for playground equipment.
We, we got our-
There you go.
We got our attorney out of his seat.
Is this, uh, project, like a time of essence thing, is there, is, is this something that could be tabled and reworded for the next council meeting?
Yes.
That's what I would do.
And, and talking with Rob today, uh, he understands that, um, it's probably not even going to be installed until the spring anyway. Um, he was anxious to have the council approve it.
My advice is to table it, reword it, and have it on next council meeting, and I'll provide a rewording if you want me to.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Would you like to amend your amendment?
I would like to amend my amendment to make a motion to table the motion regarding the donation of playground park equipment valued at approximately $27,000 from Rob Mason in memory of Marguerite Mason to be installed at Upper Chautauqua Park.
Second.
I will-
I guess you're going to do that.
I will, um, second the amended amendment. Amended.
All right. We're going to get this right.
We really are.
Is Rob still here?
No.
No, he left a little while ago.
All right. And our city attorney understands what we're struggling with and will get the appropriate language to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the cost, though.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business item E, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a authorization representative of the city, I guess I jumped somewhere, the mayor to sign as authorized representative of the city, the application for federal assistance for a available FFA or FAA, I am going blind, ARPA funding for reimbursement of up to 32,000 for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, and sanitation at the city of Hot Springs Municipal Airport.
Second.
So we were talking earlier about the, uh, public works engineer updating the master plan, uh, and that's necessary because of the American Rescue Plan Act. So the same thing's happening here. FAA, uh, is approving some allocations from those funds, uh, to the airport specifically, uh, for the cost-related operations, personnel, cleaning, and sanitation. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item F, a possible motion discussion to set a public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing at 7:10 PM on December 6th, 2021 to consider the application from HSP Loft Properties LLC for a new retail on-sale liquor license.
Second. Discussion.
Is this, is this our big liquor license that-
Yes.
Has been laying dormant? Okay.
Do we know how much city's asking for that?
No, uh, I believe the number that, um, that I've heard, it's 45 or 50,000 is what the last one sold for. So that's what this one would need to sell for.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to approve the school resource officer program agreement.
Make a motion to approve the school resource officer program agreement with the Hot Springs School District. Add an term of-
Initial.
Oh, thank you, I'm not the only one.
My right eye's going. Term, term of three years.
Second. So in conjunction with this, um, it's, don't want to steal any of Councilman Lukens' thunder, but at Public Safety Today, uh, the chief had mentioned that, uh, we have three applicants for the position, and we're still slow walking this, it's important that we get this right. But this was, uh, this will be the actual agreement with the, um, Hot Springs School District, uh, that that individual will work under. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue maturing CD.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing CD at South Dakota FIT, number 21080-102-16030, 701 Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for 12 months' term at 20.20%.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And new business item I, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training requests.
Make a motion to approve travel training requests from the finance officer, Mr. Summers-Walton, to attend Black Hills Area Finance Officer Association meeting scheduled for December 15th, 21, in Keystone, South Dakota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to, uh, our committee reports, administrative and finance. JR?
Next administrative finance meeting is December 6th at 1:00 PM here in the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory met on Thursday, November 4th, 2021, 8:00 AM at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. Members present were Petra Wilson, Ed Jensen, Steve Hill, Don Connor, and Shane Miller. Employees present were Rick Breitenbach and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials present were myself. Uh, there was no communication from the public and no old business items. Under new business, uh, the airport manager gave us an update in October. We had 65 flight operations and sold 1,242 gallons of fuel. Uh, there were no balloon launches that month because everybody seemed to be down in Albuquerque. Um, the Hot Springs Airport information has now been updated on ForeFlight. There's two apps out there, AirNav and ForeFlight, that, uh, give our airport information, things like, uh, aviation fuel price, and so we're now on ForeFlight as well as AirNav. Uh, Super AWAS is still down, uh, the entire unit has sent, been sent back to Potomac Aviation. Uh, that was sent back on November 3rd. Repairs have been made to the lighting on the flagpole and the lighting on the windsock. The last mowing of the grass has been done and, and the runway is, grass runway is being rolled. And we've got some pocket gopher issues around the runway lights, and those are being worked, uh, to be eradicated. We talked about our courtesy cars, uh, we need, and the discussion centered around the need to have a policy that is appropriate, uh, for the cars that we have and that can be communicated to, uh, potential users. And we also need, uh, feel the need to review the rental costs, that they need to be commensurate with the, uh, quality of vehicles that we're renting. Uh, we talked about water usage because we still had a water bill back in, um, September, and the water has been turned off to the, uh, sprinkler system. Uh, as we've already discussed regarding aviation fuel, um, the wholesale price as of the day of the meeting had gone up to $4.40, and that does not consider, uh, delivery cost. Uh, so it was felt, uh, it was appropriate to raise the retail price to 535 a gallon. And we'll continue to watch that and see if we need to take further action. The meeting adjourned at 9:00 AM, and our next meeting will be Thursday, December 2nd, 8:00 AM at the airport, and the public is welcome.
Any questions for Bill?
I do. Bill, there was a plane upside down out at the airport, do you know anything about that?
Yes.
It wrecked.
Yeah, that, uh, during the fly-in, um, that, uh, pilot, I think, uh, gear actually failed when a pilot came in for a landing. And, um, so they, uh, moved it off to the side, and it was upright until one of our last big winds. And, uh, the wind did an unauthorized reorientation of the aircraft, and, uh, Rick is now working with the, uh, insurance company and the owner to get the plane removed.
Was there any, uh, fuel leakage or oil leakage, anything like that that we need to be concerned with?
There was a little fuel, uh, nothing significant, they put a bucket under it and, uh, and captured any leakage, so nothing really went to the ground.
Okay, thanks.
And we're thinking about if the, uh, if the owner and the insurance company don't move the plane soon, we're thinking about utilizing our nuisance ordinance as far as, uh, ticketing it for, uh, not having a, uh, an operable vehicle.
Is that where the saying wheels up comes from?
Uh, not, shouldn't be tho, that way, no.
No.
Yeah, it, uh, no, nobody was hurt, uh, and I'm sure it got pretty exciting, just a little bit.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be November 18th at 7:00 PM this Thursday at the Mueller Center. Everyone's invited.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Uh, Historic Preservation met November 3rd at 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were myself, Scott Soggy, Steve Weenya, and Mike Summer. A quorum was not present, was not present, yeah. Uh, guests present were Vicky Haug, Luke Broyles, Carl Boshert, and, uh, Erp Bachert, and Marty Malenke. So there was just discussion only. Old business, there were 80 nuisance letters sent out. We're waiting on discussion for ordinance revision until next meeting for a quorum. Would like a list of structures that have been removed from the historic boundaries. Learned that a structure that is outside of the boundary can apply for historic status. So this is all discussion in, um, trying to get those ordinances revised and what's available and what's not for people. Um, at 109 Chicago, uh, certificate of appropriateness request was for one sign on the front facade of the building, um, there are two that were installed. Under new business, uh, 501, 503 North River Street, Vicky Haug was present to discuss that CNA for the exterior upgrades regarding their business, Minnetka Coffee. Um, estimated time to open is in April, so they were going to have an, on, uh, email vote as to her certificate of appropriateness. Marty Malenke spoke about his belongings being behind the petty building at 145 South Chicago. He is sitting, setting up for an online auction, which is to be handled by Jackie Stanley. He mentioned he'll tuck point the rest of the building, or the back of, the rear of the building first, and then address the stucco that was applied to the lower wall that faces Ace Hardware. The repair will continue on the inside, repairing the structural damage from the last fire. At 609 to 611 North River Street, contact paper has been applied to the upper windows on the bodega building. I think that's come down since this, because I just drove by there today and it wasn't up. There's still no repair schedule for enclosing what's left of the structure. Discussion items, Carl spoke on the deterioration of the retaining wall on Summit Avenue. There is a place where several rocks are missing, about three layers deep. Uh, Scott will follow up with photos. The meeting adjourned about 6:00. The next meeting will be December 1st at 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah.
Yep.
Evans Plunge, Linda?
Um, being that last Thursday was Veterans Day, we rescheduled that meeting to occur this Thursday on the 18th at noon at the Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry?
Meeting started at 1:00, eight people were in attendance, and councilwoman Mar Varvel and Johnson attended. In public comments, Andrea Powers gave a rundown of what she was working on. She mentioned charging stations for electric bikes and electric wheelchairs, an aluminum picnic table, ADA compliant, had information on different models. Her dream for the future was Christmas lights for the Pioneer Museum. New business, the recommendations for the committee is to go ahead with the start of the handicap coverage shelter at Brookside. Rotary and school could possibly help with the labor. Committee members will ask, committee member, like a committee member will ask a member from the Sons of American Legion to come to the next meeting and discuss what exactly do they want done, so the flag adjacent to the band show at Centennial Park can be seen more, can be more visible. On the tennis court lights, timer bar is getting two different electricists to look at the problem. Still a work in progress. Getting ready for Christmas, the Xmas Christmas decorations are old and probably need to think about getting new ones. Committee decided, again, the committee decided to move time to 2:00 PM for future meetings at the Mueller Center. Street Department is working on HVAC system, and the pump is installed, up and running. Good job to the street department for all their hard work. And the rec department, laughing yoga is a blast, good public response. Good public response in music and movement, mother and toddler interaction is excellent. Rec Department person, I can't read my own writing, is a good asset. Pickleball court, tennis court, heavier duty patching will be done, weather permitting. Meeting ended at 2:16. Next meeting will be at December 3rd, Wednesday at 2:00 p.m. Mercedes is the name, sorry, apologies.
Any questions for Larry?
I have a clarification or addition. With Andrea's discussion about monies available for the plug-in stations along the Freedom Trail, this is for like wheelchairs and whatnot, so they can make the entire length of town and also to provide the shelter top, the roofing, so that they can be in and out of the weather should there be hail or rain or snow or whatnot while they're sitting there and recharging themselves. So with that, it was brought up that we did not get to utilize the money for the fence on the softball field because the bid came up to like $51,000 and we only had budgeted like $23,000 for it. So we were hoping that we could utilize that money for this year's budget, from this year's budget, to put that shelter in place at Brookside Park. So, kind of like we, and with time lapsing the way it is right now, with the end of the year coming up real quick and, and weather and whatnot that we always run into, is there a potential that we can do like we did with the sprinkler system where we held the money over from a previous budget to the following spring? If that's something that needs to be done to do that?
Wouldn't they want to use that money next year for a fence and add on to it?
That was one of the discussions that was brought up, and I think, can you clarify some of that, Mayor? I think you and I discussed on this on a few points, or do you remember?
To Deborah's point, yes, the council could certainly do with the money that's left over what you did this year from monies that wasn't spent last year for the sprinkler system for the Brookside, is to go ahead and agree amongst yourselves that in the spring, when the roof could actually be built, that you would go ahead and take the money out of the general fund to put back into parks to pay for the roof.
Does that answer your question, Larry?
Yeah, that answered. I got into, what I was going with that, Deborah, is that we have this master plan for the parks, and this was one of the master plans that's in the parks. So right now, my impression from the committee is follow that master plan, stay with that. I think Valerie, she left, but she had mentioned something, mentioned something like that. I wanted to bring it up to your point, is that we are, at least, the committee is wanting to follow that now, at least try to start utilizing that master plan and get some things done. So that's why I wanted to bring it up in that way. Thank you, Deb.
Yeah, and I think the, she's, Andrea's grant was for two plug-in sites, so we were discussing having Brookside being one and Centennial Park, since they already have the shelters, being the other. So those were like fairly good distances that people could hopefully get to if they were getting low on charge.
Yeah. And Andrea did have the grant money to go ahead and purchase both those charging stations. I had put the question to the Rotary Club if they could put together a cost estimate for the materials for the roof, since they put up the other roofs in Centennial Park, that it would be the same design, and then give us an estimate so we'd know the money that's still left in parks, would that be enough to cover the roof on the one down at Brookside?
So that is in the works, kind of, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Billy was else, yeah.
Okay.
So am I to understand we're now going to fix the fence at softball field?
That's what it sounds like.
Okay.
Long way to get your answer.
Don't matter.
All right. Anything else for Larry?
That's it.
Thank you, Larry. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning will meet Wednesday, the 17th, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Okay. Public safety met here at the Mueller Center Conference Room today at 10:00 a.m. We finished up at 2:00 p.m. We think we set a record, or at least a personal best. Members in attendance were Mayor Nelson, myself, JR, Linda, Larry, and at least in spirit, Deb. We had to let Deb know she couldn't come because we would have had a quorum and we did not put out a notice of quorum. Also in attendance were Chief Mike Close, Safety Coordinator Lori Sherard, and Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard. And we had nine members of the public present, and I really, really appreciate that. It's, it was, it was great. We, it really added to the things that we needed to discuss and, and they brought a lot, a lot of clarity and a lot of, of good information. Regarding the agenda, we did, the agenda as published was pursued. Regarding communications from the public, a member of the public was present to request that the yield signs on Canton Avenue at Fifth Street be changed to stop signs during the upcoming Highway 385 road construction, given that there could be increased traffic on Fifth Street. After discussions of the fact that there are many near-hit incidents and that there used to be a stop sign at that location, it was determined that it was appropriate to change the current yield signs back to stop signs and go ahead and make that change now and make it permanent and not wait for the road construction. Chief Close gave us an update of some significant events going on in the Police Department. This Friday, November 19th, Officer Shively will graduate from the Law Enforcement Training Academy in Pierre. On November 22nd at 1:00 p.m. in Case Auditorium, just about every member of the Police Department will be making a presentation to the high school students on a number of topics. So I guess if you got a chance to come and view that, that'll be a good time of interaction between the Police Department and the students. As Mayor Nelson mentioned, the School Resource Officer position has been posted, and to date, we have three applicants. The department has issued a significant number of parking-related warning tickets, and a recent review of city streets indicate that the recipients of those warnings have responded appropriately. So thank you to the Police Department, and thank you for the residents of the city for responding to those corrective action requests. And in October, the department responded to 468 calls. In old business, we'd had a resident on Garden Street request that the curve warning signs be installed right there at that S curve, and those signs have been installed, and I think that should enhance the safety of that area. We've had an agenda item regarding house and property numbers, and our first step to try to get that done, and I appreciate Deb, even though she wasn't able to attend because we wouldn't let her in the room, has provided some verbiage that we want to put on the, one of the next water bills. It is a requirement that we all have house numbers on our, on our buildings. It's not only a regulatory requirement, it's just a really good idea if we need emergency services, so that the ambulance, the police, and the fire folks know where to go. So the, the verbiage, if it fits on the water bill we're looking at is, "For your safety and assurance of timely emergency response, please make sure that your house number is clearly visible from the street with minimum of four-inch numbers." Once we get that put on the water bills, then we'll follow that up with an ad in the In a previous meeting, we had a resident request that we use speed or traffic cameras to monitor the speed on University Avenue. The possibility of using a speed or traffic camera to assist with speed limit compliance is being investigated. The hardware for that would cost about $12,000. As this is not in the 2021 or 2022 budget, we'll be looking into available grants for such equipment. Additionally, we'll also be verifying that if we have the legal right to ticket individuals using such equipment. If we are able to procure this equipment and if it's, and we try to get it to be portable so we could move it from various parts of town, because we have had residents from various parts of town come to public safety, asking us, "Please do something about the folks speeding on our streets," and this might be some way that we could actually address the problem. So the information that we've gathered so far and our path forward has been communicated to that individual, and so hopefully we'll be able to do something about that. We've had a few folks ask about what is the process for obtaining a medical cannabis license in the city of Hot Springs. Very, hopefully it's the simple process, it'll be simple to say, anyway. But if, if you're interested in obtaining a medical cannabis dispensing license in the city of Hot Springs, step one is to obtain a state license. And part of that process will be to obtain and complete a Form E from the city. And once you submit that completed Form E that you obtained from the city, you'll submit that to the state. Then once the state issues you your state permit, then the city will process, you'll come and fill out the city required permit, and that's when the city will collect your, your license fee of $5,000. And we'll, so we're not going to make you pay $5,000 upfront, and then if you don't get your state fee, you're out. So we won't collect the city fee until you have your state license. So hopefully, that simplifies it. Under new business, Safety Coordinator Lori Sherard provided an overview of the topics and sessions. She participated in the State Joint Safety and Risk Conference, and she'll be providing that information at the city safety meetings as appropriate. We talked about some mobility scooter safety issues, and members of the public were present to discuss the challenges that those folks on mobility scooters face when their snow is not removed from crosswalk access points. The Safety Coordinator and the mayor discussed the current process that's used for snow removal and stated that they would review the snow removal priorities to try to better address the issue of getting the, the snow cleared from those crosswalk access points. And since it's getting to be that time of year, we want to take this opportunity to encourage not only homeowners and residents, but also businesses to promptly remove snow from in front of their homes and in places of business to allow the safe movement of pedestrians and those on mobility assistance devices. And just as a reminder, we do have a city ordinance. It's Title IX, Chapter 94.11. It says it shall be the duty of the abutting landowner to a public sidewalk to keep such sidewalk clear from snow and ice at all times. Snowfall shall be removed from public sidewalks within two hours of the completion of the snowfall during daylight hours or by 10:00 a.m. the following morning. If it's impossible to remove the snow and ice from the sidewalk, the owner shall use a de-icer or sprinkle sand on the sidewalk to prevent the sidewalk from becoming slippery or, and dangerous to travel. So again, please, please help those folks out, especially as they try to get around on their scooters to, to be able to traverse. We covered all of that in about an hour and a half. And then we talked about fireworks ordinance, and we reviewed five options, and the public discussion took place, started at 11:30, and we had six members from the public joining our committee members to discuss the issues and the options. Like I say, we, we finished that up about 2:00 p.m. I say that with a bit of a grin on my face, but really, it was good to have the public involved in the discussion, because the public's the one that's going to be impacted by whatever ordinance we come up with. No specifics were settled on, but in general, the consensus included the following points. One or two days is long enough. We don't need two weeks. And probably July 4th and maybe one, maybe the day before is all we need. We need a time limit for when they can be shot off. We need a ban associated with fire danger to include high, very high and extreme, because that's, will be consistent with Fall River County. We'll probably also consider banning all fireworks if there's a red flag warning in place. And we want to do that because that takes into account wind, humidity, as well as temperature. Sometimes the fire danger almost has a bit of a lag associated with it, whereas the red flag warning takes into account the current conditions. We need to make sure that a reasonable discharge height is included. So how high up can the fireworks go? We need to take into account the noise impact on the people's health. We need to address the fire risk to the forest around the city, in the city, as well as the homes and the structures in the city. And that's really the two main things that we have to address with this ordinance, is the health of the people and the fire risk associated with fireworks. So the committee will continue to work this issue and will be bringing a proposed revision to the council at a future meeting. Meeting adjourned at 2:00 p.m. and the next meeting will be Monday, December 20th, 10:00 a.m. here at the Mueller Center Conference Room. And when I post these minutes on the website, I'll also be posting a copy of the five options that we used for our discussion. I'm not sure that we'll land on any of those five, but you'll at least be able to see what we talked about. And again, thank you, committee members, and thank you, public, for all of your contributions to our discussion. And again, Deb, sorry we couldn't let you in.
It's okay. The people that needed to be there were there.
JR?
Fine job, Bill.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just one. How many people have actually asked for marijuana license?
I've had one call, but it was just an inquiry of, of interest. I'm not, and I've heard of one other statement of interest that, so I don't know of any serious requests, but that's just because I don't know.
I think there were a couple of requests at City Hall, but information requests, I believe, is all.
Did you ask something, Craig?
I did. I had a few calls on those little orange tickets people got all over town. Myself, I noticed that he wasn't very consistent. And I'd like to know are they going to continue keeping this up? Are they going to continue looking at the traffic violations on the streets in town? Or is that just a one-time deal?
My assumption is they will continue.
Well, I was, the other day, I was following a law enforcement vehicle from my house and I watched them pass, two cars that- and I watched them pass, two cars sitting on the side of the street, parked the wrong way, and they just kept going. So that's why I was asking if it's going to be consistent, or if it's just a one-time
I would hope they will continue, and I hope consistency improves.
Let's hope. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
You'll have to bear with me because my right eye took a, yeah. We had two meetings, one on the 9th and one on the 10th. Myself, Bob Nelson, Dave, Billy Morrow, Deborah Johnston, Sean from the War Department, Scott, Tracy, and Mr. Sanders, Fred? No, he ain't Sanders, his name's Fred. With Sanders sanitation was there. First thing, presentation was given to us from FFA Farm, Future Farmers Administration, is that right?
America.
America. They gave a presentation because it's going to go to a state program, and I thought they said it's on Friday.
Yeah, it's kind of a competition, too.
Yeah. And they gave a presentation and did a very, very good job. I was happy with it. We opened up a bid for our solid waste, and there's only one bid, and Sanders sanitation was the only bid. We talked about a mobile stationary veterinarian service. There goes again. They want to set up like, like parks, parking lots and stuff, and it's something we need to discuss and go through. Okay, I'm back. My eye keeps going blurry and I can't see. We talked about that dirt that was taken out of driveway and, and put in the alley at 19th and, and Washington, and I was told that was taken care of. Okay. Sixth and bypass, we, some people was talking about, there's a real dangerous intersection coming off of Sixth Street onto the bypass, because there's like a six-foot fence that runs right alongside the highway, and it got extended just the other day even further down. And the Street Department, Billy was complaining that if you bring a, a sanding truck up to a big plow in the front, even without the plow, you can't see around it, so you got to add another eight foot on top of that, you really can't see around that fence. So he says it's a safety issue, and I think Scott was going to address it, but I never heard, so. The international dump truck, they found a hub for it, that's done, we can take it off Okay. Valley View Drive drainage improvement. They have to build some boxes out of concrete with some metal grates that they have to build per box, so debris can't get into the culverts and stuff that they, they put underground down there. We talked about the donation of money for the playground equipment, that was all settled. Martin Street Project's going good. They made an agreement with the Bible Institute for the residents that live back there, since all the Martin Street will be blocked a lot to go through the Bible Institute. Talked about Dollar General. Supposedly they poured concrete on the city right away, right over the dirt. They didn't put roads course down or anything under it, they just poured it, and we're looking into that because we can't allow that, and they might have to tear it up. Another reminder, as of November 1st, there's supposed to be no trailers, campers, things in the street that deter the snow piles from having to go around them. So I'm just saying that so people know that they need to get their enclosed trailers, car trailers, anything off the streets through the winter time. Our next meeting will be November 30th at 1:00. Everybody's welcome.
Very good.
I had a question, Craig.
I have an answer.
Okay, good. On this mobile vet, is this going to be a new business or an existing one that's changing into a mobile vet?
It's barnyard.
Oh, okay.
And we have to, you know, look it over real good and make sure everything's.
I think she wants to change to a mobile.
Yeah, because I, I heard she sold her building.
I knew it was for sale.
Yeah.
And she's been planning on trying to do this for quite a while.
Yeah.
So what she wants is like, permission to park like down by the, where the new dog park's going to go, would be one option, or by the Boy Scout building in Centennial Park parking area, which we had some discussions about that might not be the best place, because it would interfere with other things that frequently go on there.
The problem is down by the dog park that don't belong to the city.
Yeah.
So that's not up to us whether they can park down there or not.
So she just needs to look at what options are available for her, where she can park, where people can come and bring their animals.
Okay.
And it be allowed.
More information is needed at this time, because it's, she needs to come to us with somewhat of a plan and what she's looking at. So there's, it's a conversation that's going to go on for a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No? Thank you.
Karen? Would you help us remember to get the garbage contract from Sanders Sanitation on the next agenda for council consideration?
Yes.
I don't remember the exact dollar amounts, it's not dollar amounts, but took a look at the current per tote fee that the city's paying, and then the new fees under the, the new contract, and for each one, just a standard regular tote or a recycling tote, the, the cost went up less than a dollar per tote. So if you, all you have is a, just a regular trash tote, your, your bill would go up less than a dollar. I think it may be 76 cents, 74 cents. And then the recycling one is a little more, but the total that everybody's fee would go up would be less than $2 if you have both of them, a standard tote and a recycling tote. If you could help us remember to get that on the council agenda. And then Craig, you talked-